I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call this meeting of the West Burlington City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Crowner, Rowley.
Here.
Stewart.
Here.
Please.
Here.
Here.
First meeting of the new year, 2013. Need to perfect and approve the agenda.
Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Rowley.
Aye.
Stewart.
Aye.
Please.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Consent agenda.
Motion to approve is presented. Support.
There's a motion with support to approve consent agenda items one through five, which are minutes of regular city council meeting on December 19th, 2012. Approved the payment to Bridgeway Incorporated for reimbursement from a community development block grant. Approved payment Southeast Iowa Regional Planning. Approved the clerk's monthly financial report for November 2012. And approved the claims that's presented in the amount of $366,022.70. That breaks down to the general fund, $127,655.14. Road use tax, $20,515.21. Tax increment financing, $161,875.93. Public Works Building, $9,920. Water, $29,107.10. Sewer, $14,580.63. Risk management, self-insurance, $1,289.37. Flex account, $404.32. And the Fourth of July celebration, $676. Any discussion? Roll call.
Stewart.
Aye.
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 Rowley.
Aye.
Motion carried. Before we get into the committee reports, this is the second meeting in a row where I have to pass on some sad news. Gary Franklin, who used to be one of our police officers, passed away this last week. His funeral's tomorrow at St. Mary's at 10 o'clock. Gary was an officer for about 16 years here at West Burlington. And he also served on the Des Moines County Sheriff's Department and Burlington Police Department. Last six months, we've lost a couple of officers that have been here previously, Gary and Deb. So our condolences go out to Gary's family.
How old the man was he? I didn't know him. How old was he?
Sixty-six. Finance. Rod's not here. Got any finance? We are gonna do a little budget work session here after the formal meeting. And we've got a few things to go over, a few departments to go over, and it shouldn't take that long. Anybody have anything for finance? Streets.
I don't have anything. And I see Randy is not here. Dan, I don't know if you got anything?
I don't have anything.
Well, if anybody noticed here, about three, four days ago, we had a, there was a water main break on the Burlington side right in front of the Vista Bakery. And the water was kinda shooting up out of the cracks in the center of the pavement there. I think they got that taken care of right away. I don't think it hurt the pavement.
I think they had one down here about two weeks earlier, too.
That was, yeah, that was on summer.
And then they had one down there by Casey's.
Public safety. Chris?
You know, I don't have anything, but we've got our chiefs. Brad?
I'd just like to say something about Officer Franklin. He was my training officer. He was like the ultimate small-town cop, very friendly. Stuff that he trained me, of course, I pass to this day down to our officers. The friendliness, the compassion that he showed, and professionalism. He was always back in my day when I first started, the go-to guy. If you had any questions, I can't think of an officer that didn't love to work with Gary. Everybody looked forward to it. He was a real morale booster. He's gonna be sorely missed. My condolences go out to the Franklin family. Tomorrow Burlington Police Department, Des Moines County Sheriff's Department, along with West Burlington Police Department, will escort his remains to St. Mary's Church tomorrow morning. It's just a sad year for our police department, losing two past officers. And Officer McCullough and Officer Franklin will be missed.
Okay, anything else?
No, that'll be it.
Right?
Well, in buildings, we've got two finals we're working on, one at Pro Motorsports and the other one's the Klein Center. Getting real close on both of them, so we're starting to wind them down. And on the fire side, we did some, we had five go over to Mount Pleasant Saturday and do some certification testing. And we're waiting on the results. And one of them was one of the Safer Hire-Es doing our firefighter one. So that's all I've got. Pretty quiet since it's turned cold. Construction's slowing down a little bit.
Anybody have anything for either one of the chiefs? Utilities.
I don't have anything. Randy's not here. I don't know if you have anything, Dan?
I don't have anything for utilities. Sanitation.
I don't have a thing.
Don't have anything for sanitation. Other staff report. Kelly? Leslie? Our in budget?
That's right, budget.
I got one thing. I received an email today from Dennis Greger, our rep for, on the Airport Authority. And Air Choice One's been awarded a contract for another three years on the, stuck up, essential services. There we go. So that's good news. I think all the planes are being filled. Alrighty. New business. Act number one is to consider the incentives for the 2013 Employee Wellness Program. Amy's here.
Okay, so last year, or last year, last year?
Last year.
Yeah.
We approved the wellness program. And you asked for like a revision of the incentive program. So Dan and Leslie and I met last week, it was. And as you see on your board, you'll see that what's maintained throughout the program are your participation rates. So depending upon where the employee falls in terms of their participation rate at the end of the year, they may be awarded an extra reward based upon their biometric, meeting three of the five biometric indicators, or five of five of the biometric indicators. And these are all items that we look at in terms of metabolic syndrome and pre-diabetes. So when individuals have three out of the five, then that puts them in higher risk for developing type-two diabetes within the next five years. So our goal with next year's program is to incentivize participation, but also to incentivize outcomes. So, you know, we're looking at blood pressure within a healthy target range of below 130 over 85. We're looking for fasting glucose levels of below 110. Fasting triglycerides below 150. And fasting HDL cholesterol's of above 40, or 50 for women. And then waist circumference, and that's also relative to weight. So again, employees will have, from January to December, so to complete this challenge. Okay, so we're looking at, Leslie, am I correct in saying Tuesday, December 10th, we'll have our post-screening again. And so based upon how the employee fares in each of those five areas, including their participation, will determine their reward. Okay? And for those employees, let's say who are taking cholesterol medicine or are on blood pressure medicines, they're unable to get their cholesterol or their blood pressure within those ranges, all they have to do is provide a note or a statement from their medical provider stating that the employee is currently under their care and is compliant with the management of that specific disease condition. Okay? And then in terms of the waist circumference, you know, if they make a good effort, but still they're not within that range, just reducing their weight from the pre-screening by 5% will gain them that reward. Or submit documentation of monthly exercise. You know, so on average, that's two sessions of exercise per week. And that can be done downstairs in your gym or at any fitness center in the community. What are your thoughts on the amount that Leslie, Dan, and I put forward?
How often do you guys meet? Once a month, or twice a month?
For wellness?
Yeah.
It just depends. Typically, it's at least once a month. And that's just for your educational sessions. There's challenges every month. There are exercise sessions brought here once to twice per month as well.
And we'll have to have another biometric screening in December, which isn't part of our actual fee that we paid, correct?
Correct.
But we renew again next year. We can move that January 1 up into December.
Into December.
So how many times are you tested here?
We test in January and December.
I like it. I like the combination of just having to participate all the time in addition to meeting.
It promotes high involvement, but at the same time, it promotes individual...
Results, yeah.
Yeah, results.
How many people are involved?
We've got 30 people that we do the screening for, and about 22 people...
From the city?
City, yes. Sometimes, I think we might add a spouse or something, too, last year. But they're all on our health insurance plan.
We can manipulate the rewards, you know, based upon what you would like to do.
I think this is a pretty good breakdown. I mean, I like this.
Yeah, it's kinda what you asked us to do last time, when I suggested just doubling it. You said to come back with something that was results-oriented, and so that's kinda what we did, so. And I think that's a good combination. We, if you notice, we took, you don't get anything extra if you don't participate at least 80% of, with the educational stuff. So even if you happen to be healthy, if you don't come to everything, you don't get the extra bonus, so.
Mayor, last time, we approved the wellness program, correct? We just set aside approving...
What incentive?
Do we need another motion on this, then, or?
Yeah, it'll be an increased, it'll be an increased amount. We approved what we had last year, but since we're gonna increase it, we have to approve the increase, so it's clear in the minutes.
Well, I would, discussing it before we have that motion out there, I'd make that motion to include this, the wellness incentive program.
Support.
Okay, no motion with support. Is there any other discussion? Roll call.
Aye.
Aye.
Rowley.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I think it'd be great if we had to pay out about 9,000 bucks here.
Well, then you're looking at a return on investment to typical wellness programs with what we're doing with your program of $3 for every dollar invested in the program. So if we get the outcomes that we're planning on getting.
Well, I hope you do well, because I have diabetes, so it's not fun to play with, so, yeah. Anybody that goes and does that and push it, and you always have to work on it.
We do.
I think I've seen some results, some good results just in last year.
Yes. Yep, we've had...
And with people getting into it, it's not like me, 'cause they feel it was 10 years that I had it. It was one of those unfortunate and it never caught it at that time, because nobody took physicals that much and everything. And then when they did, it just got caught, so.
Yeah.
It was too bad on that part, but it's, still taking pills, that's okay.
I'm just looking, we did 23 things that we gave them regular credit for last year. We did the Biometrics, Live Healthy Iowa. You had an exercise thing downstairs. We did blood pressure testing. We did a stress seminar. How to Design, Exercise, and Quiet in Day Seminar. Beginner's Boot Camp, 70,000 Step Challenge, the Patience to Change Seminar. We did a 15-minute walk, a stretching, a bike-a-walk to work, or the Shoe Fit Seminar. We did a grilling, Eat Wisely campaign, tail-gating, cooking seminar, eating out seminar, fruit-vegetables challenge. We did another walk. We did a sleep seminar, our Wild-Gain Cooking, and Dr. Mike Avalossee Health Seminar. That's not in addition to all the extras that they did. Some people did the walks and the runs and some of the special, Jamie came several times and did special exercise things with a lot of the employees.
And you do some of that during the lunch hour or early morning?
Uh-huh. Either before work or during lunch.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jamie.
Thanks, Jamie.
It wasn't that bad, was it, having to sit back there through this?
Yes, how long is this gonna be? A half hour, thirty seconds?
Never know.
You can stay with us till we go into the closed doors.
Item number two is to consider a resolution naming the official newspapers of the city, the Des Moines County News and Burlington Hawkeye.
Support.
With support, any discussion? Roll call.
Aye.
Rowley.
Aye.
Stewart.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Act number three is to consider payment to Snyder Associates for engineering services related to the West Lift Station upgrades in the amount of $6,089.78 for the West Lift Station and $9,920 for the sign on the Public Works Building.
So...
Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Rowley.
Aye.
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 Motion carried. Act number four is to consider payment to French Rancor for engineering services related to the Broadway Reconstruction Project in the amount of $2,934.95.
So...
Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion?
Have we seen anything yet on this? And here, it just says they did a profile of Broadway and you viewed the accident history.
We haven't seen anything, no.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Stewart.
Aye.
Please.
Aye.
West.
Aye.
Rowley.
Aye.
Motion carried. Act number five is to consider extension amendment to the forgivable loan agreement with KPI. And Jason and Rob are here to take us through this.
Jason Hutchison with the Greater Burlington Partnership.
Rob, you can hop up there, too.
Good to be with you. I can't hear very well.
That way, back of your heads in the camera.
I'm a little under the weather, so I can't hear very well and I can't talk very well, but I'll stay away from you. Rob is, Rob Harrington is our new Director of Economic Development. If you've not met him, I encourage you to do so. We are still transitioning in projects, and so projects that I was a project manager for, I will continue until those are complete. And then any new things that are gonna come forward will be from Rob. But we're here tonight to discuss the project with KPI Concepts. When we came to you a couple of years ago, there were two parts to this project. One was the job creation aspect, and then the other was the expansion of their existing facility. And the expansion is complete. And on the job creation agreement, we used your incentive program that you have in place for that project. And under the terms of your program, there's typically a two-year period to create the jobs, and then an additional three-year period that the jobs need to be maintained. So we don't just see a blip of jobs at the end of the job creation period. They need to retain those for three years. We also, at the beginning of any contract, we do an employment records review to determine the number of positions that they start with. We call that the baseline. And in KPI's case, the baseline at the beginning of the contract was 29 positions. We provided, or you as the city, provided a $72,000 forgivable loan to them in the hopes of seeing 24 jobs created. So with that baseline number of 29, they would need to create 51, 53 jobs to fully comply with the terms of the agreement. The company did not hit that number. They did not create 24 positions. The agreement called for an audit of their workforce or employment records to take place in 2014. The company knew that it did not hit the goal, and so rather than wait until 2014, they submitted their employment records to us, and we reviewed them. And we reviewed records from 2011 and from 2012. In 2011, which was the original deadline to create the jobs, they had 44 positions. So they created 15, but they were nine short of the total goal. We reviewed them again in 2012, and by that time, they had an employed workforce of 51. So at that point, they were two positions short of fully complying with the agreement. Now, when we do these audits, we take the employment records that are submitted to the state for payroll tax purposes. They do not get any credit for temporary employees. They only receive credit for W-2 salary employees on the payroll. So they probably had more folks working in their facility at the time, but we really only look at W-2 employment. So as Dan and I and Rob have discussed this, we think, we're bringing two recommendations for you. Then I have a third that I'll touch on at the end. But the first one is that you allow a one-year extension on the job creation. So instead of the job creation period ending in 2011, we're recommending that you grant them an extension to 2012. I realize that's already in the past, but doing that would put them two positions short of meeting the target instead of nine. With that, there would be a repayment of $6,000 for the two positions that they failed to create. We've discussed that with the company. They seem to think that that's reasonable and would attempt to make that payment shortly. Moving forward, I would recommend in these future agreements, we move to a three-year job creation period and a two-year maintenance instead of two-year job creation, three-year maintenance. The reason for that is the state has recently reviewed their programs. And most of the programs that the state offers is on that three-year creation, two-year maintenance. And that would help in future contracts, making sure that we have the timeline similar with state programs in case we were to overlay them. It's easier to explain to companies if the rules tend to be about the same. At this point, I'd be open to questions. I know that was a lot of dates and a lot of...
Did they not have qualified people to do the jobs, or did the jobs just not create?
I think it's probably a little bit of both. I mean, on one hand, it's hard to predict far enough out exactly the number of employees that you're gonna create. And so they continued to diversify their product line and continued to add employees, but they didn't hit the targets. Now, I think they would like to hire some more folks. They need to make sure that they have the right folks to fill those positions. So I think there was a combination, and I'd hate to put more weight to one than...
I just wondered if we're lacking in the skills that they need for the employees they're looking for.
We certainly are in many occupations in the community, and many employers are reporting that they have positions that they'd like to fill, but they're not able to do so with the right individuals.
So what was the cost on nine?
That would have been, at $3,000 a job, that would be $27,000.
And that was over a two-year?
Right.
So what they wanted to do is go do a three-year, so that's what you're recommending?
Correct.
Do that, give them an extra year. And so we got down to...
No, job creation's already done.
Correct.
That portion of it's done. They're only two shy.
I know, they're two shy, and they want to pay six instead of the 26.
No, they won't pay two instead of nine. We're gonna...
For $6,000, two.
Yeah, right.
Right, okay. But these asking for the next contract, three...
Yeah, if we ever do this again with another...
They want to go three. That's all I was asking.
We do what, kind of follow the state, what they're doing.
Right.
Three years, or, yeah, three-year job creations.
Right. We would need to amend the existing contract to allow for that third year of job creation, which would put them at the 51.
Could you repeat that again?
The, we would need to amend the current contract to, instead of giving them 24 months to create the jobs, to give them 36. Doing so would bring them to an employed level of 51.
You mentioned you had discussed this with Dan and Rob. Is that Councilman Crowner? Oh, this Rob, okay. Have we spoken with anybody at KPI about this?
Yeah, I've talked to the management team at KPI.
What do they think?
They think it's fair. I mean, they certainly understand, we had a target, we failed to hit the...
They understand that the 3,000 times two is fair?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, yep.
Well, I do, too. I admire what they're doing out there. I mean, he's took nothing and created a whole lot. And he's putting a lot at risk, a little bit that we helped him out with. I think this is more than fair. If it was my money, I'd say to heck with it, but it's not. It's the city's money and taxpayers' money, and I think this is fair, so.
Now, are they gonna keep these 51 jobs through 2014? Is that correct?
Yeah, the recommendation is to keep the maintenance period the same. So we would do another checkpoint in August of 2014. If they're not at 51, if they're lower than that, they would have to make another payment to you for the amount that they're short. If they're over 51, they don't get any credit for that, so to speak.
Is this the first time? It is, isn't it? The first time they, yeah, 'cause they've only been there three years. Okay, never mind, forget it. Okay. So how many, what do you want for this? To first amend the two-year contract and go to a three-year contract right now? And make a motion on that?
I guess you can, yeah.
I'd like to make a motion on a, amend the two-year contract to a three-year contract and make a motion to do that.
Support.
Okay, motion with support. Is there any other discussion? We got a roll call.
Please.
Aye.
West.
Aye.
Rowley.
Aye.
Stewart.
Aye.
Motion carried.
The only reason why I did that is because I always feel the company should have one more chance, as far as doing there. Now, I'd like to make a motion that I'll go along with the two people at a price of $6,000 to be paid.
We really need, I don't know, I don't think we need a motion.
I wouldn't think so.
Okay. Just wanna make sure...
What we need is a motion to extend the job creation period for 12 more months, which is actually already passed.
Correct.
That's what we need.
Okay.
We need that job creation period for 2012.
And then the fine or the payback or whatever just takes care of itself.
Yeah.
And that's what Rick just said.
So we're done with that.
Yep. Appreciate your flexibility. The program that you have, it's a great program. Again, in the future, I think I'd like to lean towards that three-year job creation. But it's a good program to have, and when we're talking to companies about existing projects, it's a very simple formula, so it works well. So thank you for your flexibility on that.
I just want to clarify, by extending the, by amending the contract to make it three years, it adds the additional year onto the job creation?
Well, I get that clear in my mind, too, 'cause I thought his original motion was just to extend, to do a three-year from now on.
Amend it to, from a two-year contract to a three-year contract?
Okay, it's amended, okay.
Just this contract?
Yeah.
It's recommended by Jason that in the future...
And generally, we just have you write those up when a company wants that. And generally, we just have you write those up when a company wants that. Your office usually generates those anyway, so just send it to us with the three years, and we'll be good to go.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much.
Nice to meet you, Rob. I have an empty bed, Jason, if you're sick. I just want...
At the hospital, just mine.
At the hospital. At the hospital. But you better hurry, 'cause they're going fast.
I'll make sure I get that in the mail.
I didn't, yeah. I'm not voting on that either.
Yeah, I was taking care of this little boy. He's good.
Oh, what are you even saying, then?
No, she's, you guys have dirty minds. Dirty.
Well, some people may not know where you work.
Well, I'm not looking, but thanks.
Act number six is to consider an installation of carpet for the building and IT office from Reinschmitz in the amount of $1,799.53.
We budgeted for that last year, so that's in the budget.
Just got a question on that. Does he, take these things off. The IT section of the room, do you really want to carpet that side if they drop things and little knickknacks and that stuff in there, trying to find it through the carpet? 'Cause usually ITs usually are a...
Well, that's part of where it's getting tore up over there. The problem, the problem why we want to...
Getting popped up?
The tile's getting tore up by the chairs is why we wanted to add it.
All right, that's all I need, okay.
We'll buy him a magnet in case he drops any little...
I think initially, we didn't put carpet in there because we thought people doing building construction, people would...
Well, I didn't want you, I didn't want you to put shag carpet in, you know, the sixties, yeah.
And this quote was from November of ten.
It's still good.
Wow. Either they were ripping us off then...
Or they're giving us a good deal today. Who knows?
Motion approved.
Motionless support. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Hi. Hi.
Hi. Hi.
Motion carried. Very old business. Oh, I apologize for not doing this earlier in the meeting. I completely skipped over it, but anyone wishing to address the council matters that we did discuss or didn't discuss tonight. Somebody wanted to jump up. I'll entertain the motion to adjourn.
Oh, so moved.
All in favor?
Hi.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you. We're gonna have...